I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the glory of our government, to the strength of our bodies. Rebecca, who can you call for? Linda Bailey?
Here.
Cam Greiner?
Here.
Brittany Cagle?
Here.
Val Reagan?
Here.
Julie Truitt?
Absent.
Rebecca Hurd?
Here.
Judy Strong?
Absent.
The first thing on the agenda is results driven and superintendent talk. So that was awesome.
Yay! Awesome report. Well, first thing is our tentative budgets. Alright. Last year, fiscal year 2014, our budget ended up 9.25% under budget. Alright, so we came in under the projected budget. The deficit was still there, but it was nowhere near as big as it was projected. So, we were able to cut a lot of our losses. And this tentative budget is built on those same premises. We budget conservatively on both the revenue and our expenses. It's going to look real drastic, but it's going to be, it'll be our hope to do the same thing we did this year, which is minimize our expenses. And there's not much we can do about maximizing or increasing our revenues, given that we're a taxing body. But, we can minimize our expenses. And that's what we plan to do. Alright, this one's a little small, the rest of them get bigger. So, these are our, the funds that we in schools have to budget for. The education fund, operations and maintenance, debt service, which is bonds, transportation, municipal retirement and social security, our capital projects, working cash fund, toward immunity fund, and fire prevention and safety. Those are the revenue streams that we have. This is where our money that we receive in taxes goes into one of these funds depending on the taxing rates. So, 2013-14, our reserve balance, our reserve balance in the education fund was $4.4 million. 2014-15, our reserve estimate, our reserve revenue, I'm sorry, estimated revenue. She's reserve balance, estimated revenue, $5.28 million. Our estimated expenses, $5.98 million. Estimated loss, $697,000 in the education fund. Now that's where the majority of our bills are paid out of. Salaries make the biggest majority of that chunk of expenses, but it's also our books. And all of the, all of the things it takes to run the school come out of the education fund. Operation and maintenance, just like it says, operation and maintaining our schools and operating them. Reserve balance is $333,000. Our estimated revenue for this year is $154,000. Our estimated expenses, $201,000, with an estimated loss of $46,000. Alright, and those are, all of the numbers you'll see as we go through, once we get through this summary. All of these numbers are based on our actual expenditures this year. Alright, so, we are trying to hold true to what we spent. In debt service, our bonds, estimated reserve balance is $128,000. Our estimated revenue, $220,000. Our estimated expenses, $218,000. So, we will have a reserve, or an unexpended amount of $2,771. Transportation, which is always a fun, fun kind of balance to work with, because you really never know. You don't know when the state's going to give us back. We don't know when kids just show up out of blue and we have to pay for their transportation and we didn't even know they lived in our school district, right? But we were transporting them all year to Peaking Schools because of the homeless situation. So, at the end of the year, we had a $6,000 bill from Peaking School Districts saying, "This is what you owe us for transporting these homeless kids." Well, we didn't know anything about these homeless kids. Doesn't matter, the law says that homeless children have the right to go to school wherever they please. So, hopefully this year we have that situation taken care of. But also, transportation includes your bus leases, our gas insurance, all those things that go into transporting students. This is also, this number, these numbers also include the contract that we have with first student for some of our other transportation needs as well. Our early childhood, students that we do midday, because you take them home and bring in another group. So, all of this transportation. The reserve balance is $240,000 approximately. Estimated revenue, $193,000. Estimated expenses, $260,000 for a net loss of $67,000. IMRF, municipal retirement fund, social security. This one should, this one usually balances zero out. Reserve balance that we have is $257,000. Estimated revenue is $218,000. Our estimated expenses are $188,000, with an estimated balance reserve of $29,000. And that just depends on the employees that we have, the number of employees, the, where they're at in salary wise and those kind of things. So, IMRF and social security isn't anything that we have a whole lot of control over. Capital projects, we have a reserve balance of $1,277. Estimated revenue, zero. Estimated expenses, zero. Estimated profit-loss, zero. Estimated reserve balance, $1,277. So, since right now we have no plans for capital projects such as building, or putting on a new roof, or putting air conditioning in, any of those kind of things, that's just a zeroed out line. Working cash, which is essentially the district's savings account and we're able to move money in and out of working cash. We have a reserve balance of $851,000. Our estimated revenue is $30,000. Our estimated expenses are zero, giving us a $30,000 profit and increase to the revenue balance. Toward immunity, we have a reserve balance of $88,000. Our estimated revenue is $145,000. Our estimated expenses, $184,000 for a loss of $38,000. Fire life safety, $82,000 balance. $24,000 revenue, $10,000 expenses. Profit-loss, $14,688. You can see the lines at the bottom of fire life safety. The little lines means what's the bottom line? Well, it's right here. Estimated, or our reserve balance is $6,390,315. Our estimated revenue, coming from all revenue streams such as our taxes, Title I funds, known grants that we do have, that all, all that revenue comes up to $6,273,386. Our estimated expenses for 2014-2015 school year is $7,46,158 for an estimated loss of $772,772. Don't ask me how it came out. I have that actual number. So, as I said at the beginning, $772,000 is an extreme number, but we go through and in the budgeting process, we look at our actual expenses from the year previous. We add the cost of inflation, price increases, wage increases, salary increases, insurance increases, all of those. We put it together and we come up with a negative $772,000. Last year, it was a negative $604,000. Alright, but being frugal and saving and watching our expenses very closely, we were able to bring it under that, well under that, and we only had a negative loss of $112,000. We will be watching this very closely, but as you'll see going on, there's some things that we just can't help in this whole budget. So, that's the summary. Alright, now we'll go, we will go through each of the funds and look at them as we move through. Do we have enough of those? I don't, I don't know. I might have enough. They seem to be sharing very nicely. Hearing the questions. Education fund, as we said, our total revenue is going to come in at $5.2 million. Our total expense is $5.9. So, the bulk of our, our negative number here is in the education fund. And as you'll see, our fund revenue from our real estate tax, $887,000. State aid, our general state aid, $2.9 million. That is $360,000 less from the state of Illinois than we should receive. Because of the proration in the governor's budget and the state board of education and having to do their annual cuts and everything else that go on, we are, we will not receive $360,000 that should have been, that we're entitled to from general stating. It's just not going to show up. So, if we take that into consideration, there's half of that deficit, that $772,000. Along with that, our Title I is also, is reduced, was reduced this year, even though our, even though our percentage of low-income students increased, we still lost money in the Title I area just because of the formulations that they use. Special education, $527,000. Special programming, $62,000. Student general accounts, $22,000. The food service, $363,000. Our interest, about $20,000. And that's, that is calculated. That includes also the CD that we just purchased, so that is in there. Miscellaneous income of $273,000 for that total $5.2 million that we will receive. So, here's the expenses, here's where it's all going. Well, at least $3.3 million of it. Administration of the school district, $309,000. These are salaries, sorry, salaries and administrative salaries, $309,000. Regular education, $1.4, $1.4 million. Special education, $646,000. Our special programs, $197,000. Title I, Title II salaries, $80,000. Extracurricular salaries and substitute salaries in the thirties. Food service, $154,000. Custodial maintenance, $226,000. Secretarial, $190,000. And then miscellaneous salaries, $5,350. So that's how we come up with $3.3 million of our, of our budget. And it is the salaries that go into this. Along with that, along with $3.3 million, you can see there's, whoop, my pointer went out. There's another million dollars that are for benefits. Alright, so the $3.3 million is just the salary and another million dollars in benefits. TRS, health insurance, life insurance, tuition accounts, but that's not the tuition account that doesn't always get spent. So even though we budget for it, sometimes it's not used totally. So that's how we get, recoup some of those losses, is in areas like that. So we've got a million dollars in benefits. So $4.3 million, or $4.2 million for salary and benefits. Purchased services. These are any of the contracts that we have with individuals. They are any of the accounts and vendors that we use to come in and provide services for us. In our regular programs, there's $95,000. Our technology purchase services, $108,000. Title I is $102,000. Special education purchase services, $145,000. Extracurricular, $29,000. Board of Education, $61,000. Administrative, about $40,000 there. O and M, $93,000. That's our maintenance that we purchase. Food, $209,000. Other governmental entity payments, $723,000. And our contingency, which is $20,000 that we build in there just in case we run over and have something that needs one of these funds that needs a little boost. So, our purchase services come out to $1.6 million. Now this is the area that we find, that we can put some thought and effort into to reduce that deficit. Alright, and these are the areas that we look at very closely. That's our lawn mowing, our, you know, our shelling, the O and M, those kind of things. We look at that and we try to be as conservative as possible. So, getting down to it, the bottom line, education fund expenses. Salaries, $3.3 million. Benefits, another million. Purchase services, $1.6 million. For a total of $5.982 million. Total education fund expenses. How's that? Any questions on the education fund, revenue or expenses? Tell me if I'm going too fast. Audience too, okay? This is a public hearing, or this isn't a public hearing, but this is the time when we can ask questions, okay? I encourage that because it's, it's your budget, it's our budget, we have to live with it. Alright, moving on to our operations and maintenance. Total revenue, $154,000. Total expenses, $201,000. For $46,000 worth of deficit. Whoops. Out of this, operations and maintenance comes such things as our supplies for custodial supplies that we use, the paper products. This is also where we pay part of the salary for our purchase services with our maintenance personnel. Mostly we buy materials out of the operations and maintenance fund. So it's things that go into the buildings themselves. Debt service, this is our bonds. We get $220,000 in revenue. Our total expense is $218,000. So there's a little bit of cushion there. But as we had our presentation and another special meeting about bonds and things for the district to think about, the board to think about as far as bonding is concerned, this may change, this total revenue may change if the board of education decides to issue new bonds at this point. And then we would have to come back and do an amendment to make this budget okay with the state of Illinois. Because if we sell bonds, we'll be receiving that bond revenue and we would have to make a change in this number here and go forward with that. Grand reputation, total revenue, $193,000. Total expenses, $260,000 for the $67,000 deficit. We were holding the line very closely up until the end of the year. We were right on 100% of revenues and expenses. We were at 100% and for the last month. And then we received that bill that I spoke about with the transportation for the homeless family. And that is, pushed it over so the transportation was in 102% of the, of the budget and went over. So, we tried very hard to hold these costs. Alright, so, $67,000 worth of savings. We'll work at it and we will try our best. The transportation again, one of those ones that we don't have a lot of control over, given that it's salaries and costs and fuel changes, I mean, oil changes and break inspections, all those things. They just have to, we just have to do it. So, out of the transportation fund expenses, administration and secretarial is $19,500. Salaries coming out of the transportation fund are $79,000. Purchased services, like fuel changes and break inspections, $65,000. Our special education is budgeted at $75,000, but that's not our, you know, that's one of those things where we don't have much control when students move in and out. If they are in need of that special transportation, you know, we just have to provide it. Our supplies and other things and other expenses come out to $260,000. Any questions on transportation? Okay. Yes ma'am?
I didn't find it in this. I know it's in there. Last year's was.
Alright, I'll make a, we need to know that.
Four thousand.
Okay.
And on the monitors, is that enough for municipal? Is that the other equipment? Like 4,500? Is that it?
I'll have to ask, I'll just have to ask where, where Shelley gets the box or if that's where we put it. Again, answer that one. Sorry.
Plus monitors?
Plus monitors?
Does that cover both the end and municipal and municipal?
The, the salaries right here is picking off last year's budget. So it is pretty thin. And I will say that at this point, you know, it is for the beginning of the year, but not for the end of the year. Now that's something the board would want to be, you know, increased and put in here, then that's totally within the board's programming.
Personally, I worked with buses a few times in the year. At least last, maybe not the last two, but the last.
Not at the end of the year, at the beginning of the year. At the beginning of the year, at the first two, two weeks of the beginning of the year. But not at the end of this last year. We haven't set, or we haven't approved, well not approved, but we have it budgeted in there for the first two weeks of this school year. So, starting on Monday, for those two weeks, we will have bus monitors. Is that right?
I asked you and you didn't respond.
I did too.
How did you know that last year we got bus monitors?
We didn't respond. You didn't, you didn't, you didn't respond. We didn't have, we didn't have a lot of bus drivers. We didn't have a lot of things going on. Parents calling and complaining. We didn't have, you know, we didn't have a lot of bus drivers ask for it. It wasn't a clean, it wasn't, oh my gosh, I'm not going to drive that bus if I don't have a monitor. Okay? So, in my perspective and at the end of the year, we're also going to do, we're going to implement a little bit differently this year, how we allow the students to go out. At least at La Salle. Because when the school bell, when the end of the school bell, in the school, the bell rings, it's a, an instant free-for-all for all the kids. So they got all jacked up and they got all wild before they got on the bus. Alright, so I think what we're going to do is tighten that up so that we have the same kind of behavior from the classroom out to the buses. Hoping to alleviate some of that, at least them getting all wound up before they can get on the bus. Because if they stand there in line for a few minutes and waiting to get on their buses and they see more and more, well, if we can hold that in check and get them out on the streets, hopefully they'll be home before it gets to, to the homeless on the buses. We can control it a lot easier at La Salle, so.
It's pretty, I mean, they bring our kids to the gym here and then the bus kids are released and they go straight to the buses. There's not a whole lot of, yeah.
Yeah, it is organized, yeah, yeah.
And then, and then there's, and then once they, once they leave, then the lockers are released. So, I mean, it's, I don't see, I have, because everybody has their spot in the gym and they sit in the raceway. No, it's not like the bell rings and they run to the time.
Well, they don't even do that in La Salle, but it is, they do. As they're walking out, the kids get to the aisle and they get wound up at La Salle for the little kids.
I've been here multiple times on Peter, who was very wonderful. In the spring, I passed a bus on my way to La Salle. Air conditioner was on, windows were up. When that bus passed, those kids were so loud, I could hear them screaming and yelling. I just don't think that's real safe. You ever have somebody on there to settle down? That's my only concern, is the safety.
And how much money are we talking?
But the problem is, is who's to say they're not gonna be wild and crazy before Christmas break or before Thanksgiving break or before Halloween or on every holiday? You know, I mean, it's, it's, it's a.
How many is, oh, it's like, okay, you know. And if we get the money, I'd like to see Ron and Bill on there every day. But I don't think we can afford that.
Okay, so how would we like to handle it? So that I know what, what I need to do. If I need to make an adjustment here at this point? Do we want to wait and see and keep an eye on transportation as this, as the school year goes on? And if we feel that the behaviors are outweighing the costs, we can move money from the working cash fund into transportation to cover that, those costs? Either way.
I'd say we wait and see because we didn't need them last year.
Okay, so monitor the monitors.
Five hundred covers two weeks. Then what are we talking, another two hundred fifty dollars? But I agree to watch it and see what happens.
Very good. Really, what hits us most in this is the purchase services and the special education. Those are the ones that hit us the most. Special education, we do get reimbursement for. That's where part of our revenue comes back to us. But, you know, still, there is that, there is that cost there to us. So even though this seventy-five thousand dollars is an expense, we do receive reimbursement for, right now, it's at eighty-eight percent. So we've got that, we've got that going for us with special education. So that would reduce this number some with the, with the revenues. Okay, social security and IMRF, not much to it. Our total revenue is two hundred eighteen thousand dollars. Comes mostly from our tax levy. Our total expenses, a hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars. So there is a twenty-nine, thirty thousand dollar overture there. Should not, should not, should not go much higher than two eighteen, but you never know. Working cash fund, total, thirty-one thousand dollars. Total expense right now, zero, thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand dollars. And for use in where we see fit, the fund with the most need, such as transportation, if that happens, there is thirty-one thousand dollars there. This is also where we discuss putting the bulk of the bond revenue, if we sell the bonds. So we would need to, if they're in that budget amendment, if we do sell it, then we would have to make that amendment to the working cash fund as well. For an immunity fund, I asked, I asked Shelley, when I started digging into this, I'm like, wait a minute, why are we thirty thousand dollars, thirty-eight thousand dollars over in court immunity? Well, the reason is, let me make sure it's not on the next slide. Nope, okay. Our reasoning, not reasoning, our reason is about fourteen thousand dollars of that is our insurance increase through workers' compensation and our general liability insurance. When those went up, obviously, that amount went up as well. And then the other twenty thousand, if I could, is that court immunity? Oh, okay, sorry, okay. The other area that had the increase this year is exactly the twenty thousand dollars to the unemployment insurance, which we budgeted that same amount last year, but we didn't use any of that amount. So if you look at, you know, when it comes right down to the end of next year, this number will probably not be thirty-eight thousand dollars. It'll probably be closer to fourteen or fifteen thousand dollars deficit. So that was, that one kind of struck me as like, why is that out of control there? And then our court immunity fund, I'm sorry, our fire prevention, life safety fund, total revenue, twenty-four thousand. Total expenses, ten for fourteen thousand dollars carryover. About a half an hour. Not bad. Now, questions? The board tonight is going to, I think, caution to approve the resolution to place the tentative budget on public display for thirty days in the district office. So the official public, the official budget forms will be in the office. And anyone from the public can come in during business hours and review it. We can make them a copy and go from there. I am asking Board of Education members, which of you would want a copy of the official for Board of Education budget forms? So that I can make sure you give a copy at the next board meeting. Well, everything, everything that's here is there, right?
It's the same that you gave us in this binder. You did change it, didn't you?
No, I haven't.
It's a state form.
It is a state form. It will be placed on the website for public display as well. As soon as it's approved, we'll put the notice in the newspaper. And it'll be on display for thirty days, also on the website, so people can view that. Yes, it is a, it is a complicated form. It is, you know, it has all the accounting numbers, all the fund numbers, blah, 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 blah. I feel that this is a, this is a little easier to digest rather than going line by line by the, you know, through the state budget report. But I have no problem making copies for everybody.
I was gonna ask you a question. We're over budget, I mean, deficit spending basically. What do you propose that we get out there? Because I'm looking at the way we deficit spending in less than ten years is a little broken. So what can we do to get out of it?
Well, I wish I had an answer for you. You're streamlined on most everything expense-wise. We hold that very tight and close to the actual expenditures. As costs increase and revenues decrease, we have to make decisions. Where, in what areas do we start looking at to cut? And that is a difficult decision. If that's a plan that the Board of Education wants to be developed, that's fine. We can start that process. But most of the time, when we start talking about reducing any deficit-type spending, the only areas that you have that do any kind of appreciable reductions in your budget is personnel, programs and personnel. So as you saw, you know, four point eight million dollars benefits and salaries. So you start funding teachers, you start funding programs. You have music, you have, you have programs that start to be looking at. We have reading recovery, we have reading interventionists. We have, you know, we can't do much about the, you know, some people might get, might say, well, if we are spending all of this money or if it's projected, we're spending to have this deficit, why are we hiring two special education teachers? Well, that's because the law says we have, we don't have any way to double up or make those class sizes larger like we can with regular education. So we could go to class sizes of twenty-eight, thirty in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and the like. We can, we can start looking at those things to try to reduce that red number. And if that's the direction the board wants to, wants me to start investigating, that's fine. I can start that.
I mean, I personally think that we need to not deficit spend every year.
But I don't think we need to take programs away from children. We need to cut whatever fluff we can.
Exactly.
All the, you know, the extras above.
Right, I wouldn't like to see reading or anything cut.
I'm sorry?
I wouldn't like to see the reading or anything like that cut. But I mean, if we do have fluff, maybe we need to look at it.
Okay.
But I don't wanna see twenty-eight children in a class, nobody, but.
No, and if we cut, let's just say, and scores. I can say scores. I know, but I'm just saying, I cannot say that. I said fluff. Okay, what are we considering fluff? Well, just to pass, if we look through the budget, like, we're donating a thousand dollars to United Way for summer. United Way is a bad thing.
Where? If you can, if you find that format.
Oh, we have to do that? I mean, I don't think we have to do that. This is a thousand dollars to United Way for summer program, which is fine.
Two, you got any?
I'm pretty sure it's a two, but I care better about it.
Okay.
It says budgeted amount, and maybe that is more than we're gonna get that.
I don't know what that money would be for that we're paying to United Way, you know.
Yes, the summer program.
The United Way summer program? That was what we did, okay. That's not a payment to United Way.
This is paid to us.
It was, it was expenses and materials for the United Way summer program. We added, you know, we had, we added part of the material spots and the snacks and those kind of things for the kids who were at the summer program. So it was not a payment to United Way, but it was purchase of materials for the summer program.
And did that grant cover everything that we spent for the summer program? Or did we have to subsidize or nothing?
I have to go, I'd have to actually look, but I imagine. I'm sorry?
It was four thousand eight hundred.
Right, we received a grant. I'm not sure if the grant covered every penny of that. Okay, but I know that we kept it as close to that budgeted number as possible. So if it didn't cover everything, maybe there was a thousand dollars of material.
I'm not, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying, maybe we just need to investigate, are we getting the board out of the money we're spending? And if we aren't, great, keep it. If we're not, maybe we could spend it somewhere else or do something else with the money.
I have no problem investigating and researching and looking into where the money is going. I don't have any problem with that. We can figure out a way to, way to do this.
And you're saying where the money's going. You're pretty, I mean, it's transparent.
It's pretty transparent.
Right, I'm not saying that. We know where the money's going, but let's, I mean, can we look and see that we're, where can we come back? Are we getting our bank for our money?
But also looking at this budget. I see some things that have already changed or expected to change within the next year, if they're not in, is that true?
Such as?
Well, I, I see teachers on here that have retired and their salary isn't included. So if you hire a teacher, that's gonna go down.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, because we, yes, we do, this is, this is not a fully budget. It is as of July first and what we know, closing the books on June thirtieth. So at that time, there were teachers who have retired since or have left and they've been replaced and things like that. So yes, there is built in. That's where we got the cushion.
And could you explain again what you said earlier about last year's budget and what it really meant? It was a lot lower than.
The estimated six hundred thousand dollar deficit, yes, yes, it did come in.
So do you expect that to be the same against this year?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We do. Wow, it is, wow, that is a big steering on there.
Right, I mean, you're thinking, you know, almost a million dollars. I mean, you can't support that. This is, this is a community that's not gonna raise their taxes.
Well, we were at six hundred some thousand last year.
Just over a hundred thousand. That's this year, that's that far, eighteen million.
I mean, that's.
Right. It's still.
It's still. I'd buy it better than losing six hundred thousand.
Well, it's the introduction, you're okay, you're almost like.
The district salaries is down three thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. So there's ups and downs.
There are, within that budget, there are. It is a waiting line, to say the least.
I wonder, I want you to check out. I don't wanna say it since it's not part of the name, but.
Yeah, like, it's. No, because that's the, that's the contracted amount. The contracted amount was fifty. So I'm not sure what the fourth point thirty-one is.
All right, just as long as you're aware of it.
Yeah. Well, like I said, last year, we had thirty-six move-in students. Twenty-nine of them had current educational, you know, individual education plans by E Ds. If they move in, we have to serve.
Right, and I see in here that some, there was raises, things like that. That, so the full salary is not in the main what's in here, so that's gonna.
That, that does account for fluctuation, yeah. So the seven hundred and. Yeah, seven seven two, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. Just like the other, just like last year's budget is in, this budget is premise on the assumption that of those budget numbers we had last year. Okay, so those budget numbers we had last year were somewhat inflated and we held our costs. Well, I didn't go from actuals, you know, to increase. We went from the budgeted numbers and increased a little bit. So that, yes, this number is somewhat inflated. And we do have changes in staff and we do have, you know, those kind of issues that are built in. But that's what a budget is, it's a roadmap for us so that we know where we're going. And we have to, you know, plan for the destination and what the, what the district's goals are. You know, I invite looking into cost-saving measures and, and we have this year. We have water mills that were crazy.
Yes.
You know? I don't know, you know, it, those are just things that you have no control over. So, you know, what we can control, we do. And what we can't, we just take the lumps. But, you know, as you go through this and you have questions or have findings, let me know so we can, we can look at these things and make adjustments before, before the final budget is approved. Or we can always amend as we go through and we find it, find laser pit falls apart. So one of those areas I skimped on.
I have a question on the custodial. We down to three workers during the summer next year? Don't we normally? Each building? I think I saw four last year. And last year's.
Three at each building, right.
Oh, that's right.
Three at each building.
Yeah.
And last year it was four, so we're gonna.
At each building.
But then I do see where we do have sub janitors.
Yep.
Have a costume or a substitute.
Or a substitute, substitute janitorial, which we won't have. Or substitute, substitute janitorial, which we won't have. We have a retirement coming up in, in the custodial area. So that'll be another cost savings as we go through. Um, those things you can't, you can't take into account until they actually happen, yeah, so. But that'll, our substitute janitor now has inquired as to, you know, the possibility he wants to, um, become the part, part. So we've got those, those little issues. One thing I did find out was at least at this point, uh, one of our tuition students to an out-of-district placement, um, has moved from our school district. So, um, that is at least, uh, a savings for now. It doesn't mean that in two months they're not back, but, you know, let's take everything in stride.
Budget for two additional aides or is it the same number of aides that we have?
It's the same number.
So I tried to follow the last year's. So she laughs, but.
Mm-hmm, but, right, and the, uh... That's not a slot that's going to be, going to be filled because it doesn't need to according to the numbers that we have.
Okay.
Also, I sent you a twenty-three thousand dollars to Pet Start. Is that for the lunch program?
Yes, that is, that is the reimbursement for the lunches and, uh, for the custodial.
Okay. So the custodial.
A little portion of that salary is, is, is parts out to Pet Start, right.
I've got one more on that. This S C, this S E S that we did last year.
Yes, ma'am.
I don't see it in here.
Isn't that good?
Okay, that's good, all right.
That is good.
Is that telling me that we made A Y P now?
No, I can't tell you that because it hasn't come up yet. But what I can tell you is that the federal government changed their rules and regulations to give schools more flexibility in Title I and we don't have to provide the supplemental educational services mandatorily like we did before.
You had a program in here.
I'm sorry?
You had a budgeted for tutoring.
We also provide our own tutoring.
So that's what that is. I thought it was the S E S services.
Oh, no, that's, that's the one that we, we do usually in the spring, we start, uh, at LaSalle and, and Parkview that we do. The tutoring as we see students who are at risk, yeah.
I just, that's service.
Yeah, no.
Did you budget for the spring dinner meeting that I believe we're holding dry in the spring?
That's a reimbursement.
Okay, so they pay for that?
Well, we, each individual school and board member pays for the, the cost.
But that's not the entire cost of it, though?
Uh, yeah, I would, I would think so.
Extra cleaning or tables, rice tables and all that might add up?
There, there could be a, a part of that that we would have to, um, just naturally assume. But is a budget in there? I don't know, we got thirty-nine or how much is it in the, in the board fund?
I was wondering about that too. And whenever this says Board of Education expenses for traveling, it almost like doubled from nine thousand to fifty thousand? Is there a reason? I, I don't know what that meant, that, why not yet? So is it like your travel? I mean, just in general? But it was fifty thousand or something?
It was under Board of Education, that wasn't his travel.
I figured that, but I didn't know how. For like Chicago and gas prices have gone up. It's not that much. We don't give reimbursement much to go to Chicago and back. That is why I've never been reimbursed for travel because I always write this.
But as, as I said in the beginning, the numbers that are here in this budget are premised on the budgeted numbers from last year. And we didn't spend everything last year, so that assumption is seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is inflated by those kind of costs. The actuals aren't, don't even meet the.
What's going to happen?
Yeah, yeah, the actuals.
Nine thousand three hundred and eighty-eight last year even though you budgeted fifteen thousand.
Right.
That's why I was wondering how, what was more, why?
Yeah, yeah, look at the, you look at the actual, you know, what we.
You got to sign out.
Yeah, and that's, that's the number that we will try to keep it to, but to plan for eventuality, so we're not amending our budget every month. Keeping those numbers just a little bit higher in case things, uh, unfortunately unforeseen circumstances happen.
So travel is not just gas up there and back?
I don't know what travel is.
That's what I was thinking, I was thinking really, it doesn't cost that much to drive.
That's our works, that's our.
That's the whole thing.
Morton, local re, you know, our regional dinners and stuff, all that's in there.
There's more training, there's more, there's more travel, there's more, that's probably, that more travel is probably.
I could get travel.
All, that's probably the Chicago trip, everything, room and board and everything.
The expense of a conference.
Exactly, the conference, yeah.
That's, I was just thinking.
Because, you know, this, this, this budget would be sixty-eight times bigger if we put in every little minutia. And you can't, you can't.
I was interpreting that as actual.
Oh, actual mileage paid, nine thousand dollars mileage and board.
Exactly, I was thinking, why are we doing that?
Well, last year, we went off the last year's, all board members except one went, whereas this year.
I did not go last year.
Yeah, Julie, Julie.
That's right, you were scheduled and then were unable to, but we had it budgeted.
Right.
And all my money was returned.
Yeah, but he had it budgeted is what he's saying.
Of course.
You budgeted and so you went off that for this one.
Mm-hmm.
And so therefore, we're only sending four this year, so.
So that number may even be lower this year than, than the nine thousand.
And it was my mistake. I was thinking travel.
No, it's not a mistake. A lot of these things are, are really judgment calls.
I think it's just, yes.
No, a lot of these things are judgment calls and that's where it becomes, you know, a little tricky and a little, uh, confusing as to which fund or which line item do we assign to a cost? And that's a matter of interpretation. That's where some individuals have issues with the things that we do. But as long as we're using the Illinois State Board of Education's accounting manual and sticking to that, I know that we're in compliance with the law and that's what we do. So if I have a question about where something is coming from, I ask Shelly, it's like, okay, why are we assigning it to this? Shouldn't this be over here? And we have a conversation and sometimes I agree with her, sometimes I don't, and we move things. So it's, uh, it's very, it's, the budget is looked at on a weekly basis almost, you know, it really is. So, um, if you look at the actuals, then you'll see that, um, we're holding the line and there isn't really a lot of fluff. You know, there are always things that maybe we didn't need to buy a, you know, um... Good example, maybe I don't need to buy tomorrow three hundred and twenty-five cases of paper, okay? But I am estimating, I am, I am speculating in the market that the price that I get today for these, for this paper being nine dollars less than what we paid last year, I'm speculating that it's not going to go down any further. So I'm purchasing a whole year's supply of paper tomorrow. So, you know, it's those kind of things. Save, the savings comes out to about three thousand dollars. Is that a lot of money in a six million dollar budget? No, it's not, but you add.
They add up.
You add those up.
You pay for bus monitors.
Doesn't say I'll pay for something.
It goes.
It doesn't affect anybody negatively along the way.
Right.
Try not to, try not to.
So that's a way to, it's a cost savings, it's a way to decrease the budget.
That's what, that's what we're trying to do. So even that number, that seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars is very scary. I'm very confident that it's not going to be anywhere near that next, you know, at the end of the year, June thirtieth. But it will be a negative note, there's no doubt about that. So, you know, investigating and looking into cost savings measures is something that the Board of Education is entrusted by the public to do. And we can start implementing those measures, uh, but I will say that the, the only way to save bulk of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars, is in staffing. Nobody wants to hear that, but that's where you save money. You don't, you don't save money by cutting three thousand dollars out of your paper budget. You know, that's just, that's just some frosting on the cake. So, that is a, that is a study then that we will get to, uh, after we put together the, the levy for this year so we can see where our taxes and where that will come out and that'll give us a better indication, forecast where we can start looking at and possible revenues for the coming year. Does that make sense? As more questions come up, please let me know, email, um, you know, that goes for the public too. You know, my email address is on, it's on the website, uh, and I'm more than happy to investigate and bring that out. Any questions? Any questions that you ask of me, just so everybody is under, has an understanding, will be sent to the entire Board of Education. Okay, so it's a public, um, it will be a public, uh, display of your email, okay, just so you know. Because I don't hide anything from the public, I don't hide anything from the Board of Education, so. Is that good?
I'm going to take this. I apologize to the board, I missed a lot of art with the phone call, so.
Was it listed the time that Ms. Strong came into the.
All right, moving on then to, uh, my question, your job description.
No, ma'am. Um, there were, at, at the original, at the original July board meeting, um, we talked about the special education coordinator's job description. And there was a, there was an indication, and rightfully so, that, uh, one of the job duties elicited here was the evaluation of special education, uh, certified staff, and that was not to be the case. So that was removed out of this, uh, this job description here. And so I'm just presenting that, uh, for the Board of Education's information. Information leading to awesome results, certificate of deposits. On, what date? On, 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 which day? Oh, yeah, seven ninth, two thousand fourteen. On July ninth, we purchased a certificate of deposit for a total of two million dollars in a seven-month, uh, maturity. And the interest rate on this account was point, was oh point five seven percent, so just over a half a percent, which is a little bit more than the, uh, uh, the checking account interest that we presently get on the majority of our, our banking money. And, and so this is a copy of the certificate of deposit and of the receipt showing that, um, that deposit was purchased and made.
What's happened if we take that out of, that out of the S fund?
That would be, that would have been out of the education fund, yes, ma'am. Two thousand thirteen, fourteen, school discipline reports. Um, the, the district uses, both schools use positive behavior intervention system, which is P B I S, um, which is something we talked about in the past, and in my opinion, it seems to be effective and very successful. LaSalle School this year was awarded Bronze Status and Parkview was awarded Silver Status by the Illinois P B I S Network, which is where we receive all our training and support and incentives for the P B I S program. We are sending a number of staff members to the state conference this year so that they can bring it back to the school with more ideas about positive behavior for our students, ethical behavior, keeping, um, helping them to learn the positive structures in the school, to reinforce them, to catch them being good, so that we don't have a lot of disciplinary, um, actions and reports. So as you can, as you can see on the first page, disciplinary duration is the entire school year. And you go down to the, uh, total students, sorry, the very top, total students, it's forty-one. Forty-one students had a disciplinary infraction and the discipline total was a, was seventy-six, uh, which would have been any kind of infraction. Forty-one students received some kind of disciplinary, uh, action seventy-six times. So that kind of shows you that there are some students who seem to get into trouble a little more often than others, so. And the breakdown is along the side, as you can see, um, the, um... The, the one that I would call to your attention that was, that struck me the most was I E P, where it says yes, I E P no, the student total. Three students who are disciplined out of that forty-one do have I E Ps or were special education students. Uh, so thirty-one, or I'm sorry, three out of forty-one students were special education students. And, um, usually, uh, I would expect that to be the other way around. So that to me is a, uh, a testament to how P B I S can work because I know that in the special education rooms it is, uh, used very, uh, very closely, so. And you have the breakdown, um, you know, the durations of one day or less, two days, three days, six days, ten, all the way to the ten days. And the report, greater than ten days. So disciplinary in fact infractions, total students out for ten days or more, uh, for ten days, not greater than, ten days. Uh, we have three students at LaSalle Elementary and we have one student at Parkview. And as you know, the three students at LaSalle Elementary also were the, uh, students who received the expulsions. So their infractions were to that magnitude, but three out of, out of three hundred, um, one percent of our, of our students. That's a, that's a number to be proud of and I think the teachers are doing a very good job with P B I S. And Mr. McCormick, um, was a P B I S enthusiast and I believe he was a, a district coach, a P B I S coach. So he has a lot of knowledge and is going to be, um, bringing that to us at LaSalle and I'm very excited about that. So, uh, I think we'll see, see some, some good, you know, maybe some good changes in this report, but it's not that bad, uh, the way I look at it. Any questions? I really do hate doing all the talking, just so you know. Um, attorney fee increase, yep, it goes up every year. We don't have any, uh... Attorney fee increase, yep, it goes up every year, we don't have any, we don't have any control over that. The only thing we have control over is whether we have to use it or not. Part of, the next one is the Head Start agreement. This is the agreement, the full agreement with the Head Start, Taswell Woodford Head Start Agency. And you can see at the beginning there, this was a three-year term of lease. So this lease agreement will be ending on June thirtieth of next year, two thousand fifteen. So that'll need to be a conversation for the Board of Education to look into and make a decision whether or not there's, whether or not to keep Head Start, keep an agreement with Head Start, with them being connected to our school district in some way, manner, or fashion. So, there wasn't much, there wasn't much in here that is up, you know, anything striking in this. There isn't enough time to do any kind of an early termination of the agreement that was kind of asked about earlier, but there isn't. By the time we gave them early termination notice, it'd be close to the end of school year anyway.
They want to terminate it.
Head Start needs to be in this district. Head Start needs to be involved with us.
I think if they want to terminate the agreement now.
Moving, moving, location would not terminate the agreement.
We have a, we have a room that we use for occupational and physical therapy. That is a, an empty classroom in itself, yes, there is a classroom. So.
Where would they do physical therapy and occupational therapy? In a mall?
We would.
But on that note also, there's no bathrooms to make that really talk about.
That's correct, there is not a, there is not any kind of restroom facilities in that extra classroom. So, this, I guess this came about as a look into moving the district office back to the Lynchville building, where this is coming, had come from. There is, there was thought as to whether or not it could happen before the school started this year. Obviously, since tomorrow's the first day of Future Institute, I don't think there's time for us to make that switch this year. With the agreement terminating in two thousand fifteen, that would be easier time to negotiate, talk with Head Start, and, you know, break the news, so to speak, that we're looking at alternate locations and sites. There would, there would be an approval process, because Head Start programs are licensed under DCFS. So the Department of Children and Family Services would have to come in and license the space that we would designate for them to use. And they have certain rules and regulations that I'm just, I don't, I'm just not aware of. So I don't know what our, what approval is going to be needed, or what other kind of alterations might be needed to classroom space that's required by DCFS. We would have to bring someone in to tell us what, what needed to be done.
Didn't they already license one of the classrooms? Because they, Head Start was not originally set to a room in the original building?
That I'm aware, unaware of.
I think they did, because they were gonna be in that end room.
That end room, yes.
The bathroom? Yes. But it might not be re-approved.
But that's, where would we displace that kindergarten?
But you have three kindergarten classes.
But it was one of them.
Now, correct?
Yes.
That's one room that we could give to Head Start. You only have three, we have four kindergarten classes, rooms.
Yes.
And we're only occupying three of them.
Our early childhood education program has that.
They could move somewhere else though, because it doesn't have guidelines like that, does it?
It doesn't have DCFS qualification, no, right.
But I agree with it, it's a little late.
Yeah, we can't have that.
But I do think we need to keep it on, on the table.
December, over Christmas break.
That is true.
It'll be done.
That is true, they were moved in in January.
Eventually, I think it would be nice if it had, Head Start children didn't be here. I mean, they're gonna go, your, their peers are here. I mean, they'll be in with the kindergarteners, first grade. It gets them, the parents ideal, help what's going on in the school. Gives the kid the ideal, you know what's happening.
Which kindergarten room was that, I'm sorry?
I don't know, it was one of the ones on the end, but I'm not sure if it was.
One of the last two, okay. One of the end rooms?
I just, mine was under the impression it was one of them on the end.
Okay. I just need, you know, we'll just have to go back to the records and find that when it was done, and see if it has to be relicensed, or if that license is good, you know, for a duration. I don't know, just have to look at that.
And apparently not all of the kids in Creve Court can fit in the Lynchville building, all the Head Starts kids. They're spread out. Like some of them go, some of them go in East Peoria, and some of them.
There are forty-three Creve Court children for Head Start.
And they can't all fit in Lynchville?
And they can only put thirty in that Lynchville building until another exit is made in that second room. They can't use that second room.
I was under the impression that we could have all of the Creve Court kids in that building, and that's not the case.
Not until a second exit.
There's an exit there.
The second room, no.
The second room means an exit.
This is a sign.
Right, there's an exit in that. I think there's only two exits, one room and another exit.
I thought that was.
Both rooms have an exit, two exits?
I know the one where.
Wasn't the expensive one possible? Are you thinking on that, or are you sure about the other one?
I, I have something to say about Head Start, because I'm on the Head Start board.
Oh, okay, great.
Um, we'll wait before that, but thank you for bringing it.
Well, yeah, I, I thought that that was the whole point of putting them in the Lynchville building, is so that they could all fit, because they could, that was one of the reasons that they went there, is because they couldn't all fit in that one room at LaSalle.
The one classroom.
In the one classroom. But yeah, I learned today that they can't all fit.
Well, if they have a morning and afternoon one, would they?
They do, right.
They do, they do now.
They still can't all fit.
They do can't all fit.
Can we find room for them to be able to?
To all fit, children in there?
Well, apparently, we'll have to listen to what Tobias has to say, and then we can discuss it again.
Well, and now that, every, every fall, we have the opportunity of adding a fourth classroom or a kindergarten. So, you know, we have to be kind of cautious in those bins.
Because tomorrow night is roundup, right?
Roundup, yeah.
I'm not a kindergarten, which is a wide of ideas.
So, yeah.
And we still have, we still have children registering, families registering children.
Well, you don't have that for like two more weeks.
Exactly.
I'm, I'm trying to be optimistic.
Maybe just people just starting to mend, and start signing up, not so early.
So we look into bringing them back to LaSalle and what it's gonna take and.
Can you do, do you get all of them?
Well, I said, and I know we have no control over this, but you know, that building that Safe School was in, is empty.
Oh, but that is not our building, that is.
I know, and I said, we have no control over that, but.
Well, our police maybe will be up with the Safe School soon, and maybe we can move them all.
Or Head Start could come there, or.
Home one, yeah.
Home one, or, you know, I mean.
Because that's like lots of classrooms.
But Safe School, I thought, couldn't fit at Sacred Core anymore.
Um, no, that's not the issue.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, if we can find a building that they could all fit in.
But you went Safe School and went Head Start?
No, no, no.
Oh, so I didn't want to say move them home.
Oh, no.
DCFS has to approve it though? Lynchville would be less likely to get that approved.
I don't think DCFS is like an approval.
Yeah, they have, Head Start wasn't.
That was Starz, that wasn't Head Start.
No, Head Start was there too.
It was the Stars program, is what I was, what I was told.
The Stars, they're after Head Start. And Head Start was there at one time.
Yes. My mom worked for them.
Yeah. So, and that was a.
They were also in the old Zerma building for years.
And you think they have bathrooms, they have exits?
Walls falling in.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so, we all agree that we can't do anything before school starts.
Exactly, yeah, I love.
We all agree that we want to talk about it later.
Yes.
About it later, or are you, are you asking for me to start the process of investigating and getting answers to, to some of our questions?
Probably DCFS, knowing what their stipulations are, would be a good start.
I'd say start moving it that way.
Yeah. Looking at the DCFS aspect. Yeah, Cindy might be able to shed some light on it.
I will. Start the investigation process. Did you want to let, Ms. Tobias go ahead and speak during this time? I mean, it's allowable.
Mrs. Tobias, would you step forward, please? Give us your name and address and usual.
My name is Cindy Tobias.
So then, question, please.
And I am on the governing board at Taswell County Head Start, Taswell Woodford County Head Start. When I saw the agenda for tonight posted, I was a little shocked about seeing Head Start and Lynchville building, the district office, switching. So I went home and I called Bonnie Jones, who is the director of Head Start. We had just talked last week, and she hadn't said anything to me about moving classrooms. So when I called her, she was very surprised, because she hasn't heard anything. No one has contacted her about moving her children, the Head Start children, out of that Lynchville building. She said no one has called her or talked to her about it. And if the school board wants to make that move to a different room, it will take at least three months or longer to get the licensing process taken care of by the state of Illinois. Right now, Head Start has forty-three preschoolers enrolled from Creve Court. But since they can only use that one room at Lynchville, because the other room doesn't have the necessary exit that it has to have, according to the licensing people, they can only do fifteen in the morning and fifteen in the afternoon, for a total of thirty children at Lynchville. So the other thirteen have to be bused from Creve Court to East Peoria to the family center. They would like to make that second room available, they'd like to be able to use it, but it needs another exit. So they can't use it at this time until they get that other exit in there. If you're going to put a classroom in the LaSalle building, it will not be able to service children until it has been licensed, which is going to be that three months or longer, that period. So, right now, it just, it wouldn't work. But if you had talked to them about it and started the process at the end of the school year, that three months would be about up. And it might've been licensed, or it would be within a month or so. But there was no communication. And they're scheduled to begin classes on August twenty-fifth. Communication is always the best policy, and it's always appreciated.
Having just investigated the situation, it's not to that point yet, Mrs. Tobias. We will continue to investigate as we have to, as Mr. McCormick should do. Moving on to action items, um, the motion, please, for E one.
Make the motion to place the FY fifteen tentative budget on public display for thirty days, in public notice, posting and public hearing regarding the same in the newspaper of general circulation within the school district's finances.
Obviously, we've taken a lot of comments and notes earlier. Is there any further comments though, before we call a vote? Okay, roll call, please.
Linda Bailey?
Being as black and white as I am, I still think we need the state more to approve this one, I hope now.
Cam Curner?
Aye.
Brendan Cagle?
Aye.
Val Reagan?
Aye.
Julie Truitt?
Aye.
Rebecca Kearns?
Aye.
Judy Strong? President Carey?
We need a motion, please, for E two.
Question of superintendent's attendance and his reasonable and necessary expenses for the annual school board conference in Chicago in two thousand fourteen, so.
Second.
I hope so. I hope I get them.
Just wondering.
If not, I have family in the area.
Any other questions?
I don't know the secret of my trauma. It is a sheriff, and that's where they assign us. And Stephanie called, called it in that day.
I know it's good, because. Roland Elspeth?
Linda Bailey?
Aye.
Cam Curner?
Aye.
Brendan Cagle?
Aye.
Val Reagan?
Aye.
Julie Truitt?
Aye.
Rebecca Kearns abstained. Judy Strong?
Yes. President Carey? Thank you, moving on to E three, motion, please?
Make the motion to recall the college educational support staff. Stan Engel, Lydia Bowden, Uma Shulman, Margaret Shoneman, Linda Timberlake, and Christine Allen, who were honorably dismissed at the conclusion of two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year, and to be employed for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year in assignments to be determined by the administration.
Second.
Comments from the board?
Yes ma'am.
Do you think anybody has served as far as substitutes?
Our substitute list is very thin, it has, it was last year. There was supposed to be, kind of mythed at the village, kind of mythed at the village. At the, at the cameras. Directing it to the cameras. A myth at the village.
They kept saying we were gonna.
Wait a minute, where's, where's the first key? He left.
He has a meeting.
God, oh, he's got a meeting.
They were, they weren't thinking, did they say they were gonna post it?
Yeah, I sent over, I sent over the text to be placed up on the marquee sign, no, on the marquee sign, right there by the veterans park. And I was, I was told that it would be up there by Monday, and it happened on Monday, so. And I was, I was told that it would be up there by Monday and it happened on Monday, so, you know.
Maybe next week.
Yeah. Maybe it had to be approved by their board, yeah. Could be. And it just says, Creve Court School District needs substitute teachers, cooks, custodians, bus drivers. Everybody needs substitutes to come on in and, and sign, fill out an application because we need, we don't have any substitutes.
Roll call, please. Linda Bailey.
Aye.
Pam Criner.
Aye.
Brenda Cagle.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Julie Truitt.
Aye.
Rebecca Kern.
Aye.
Judy Strong.
Yes. Motion carried. At this time, we will open it up to any further public participation. Please stand and give your name and address as close as you can on the other side of the cameras.
Don Blocker, 201, Hope Bridge, Illinois. You brought up tonight about the special ed coordinator's job. Just give you a little background about that and talk about some fruit for thought in your budgets of special ed coordinator's job in this district's been sixty-forty split between North Peeken and Creve Court. And we had studied that for a number of years. That was based upon the number of students that were served, especially at Creve Court versus special ed students in North Peeken. So that might be one of the areas that you might want to consider, looking at as a cost-saving factor. I know you probably can't do it this year because you run the contract. That's something next year and previous years, we also shared with East Peoria High School. At least, I think East Peoria Grade School, but there was a sixty-forty split using. We paid sixty percent of salary for the coordinator and North Peeken paid forty percent. Something like that.
That is correct. Just as a background for the Board of Education, but as, as you are aware, the Marquette-North Peeken School District broke, not broke that agreement, but they no longer wanted to be in a partnership with Creve Court regarding the special education coordinator's position. So that was, last year was not a possibility to do a split. East Peoria Grade School has their own full-time, permanent special education coordinator, as does the high school. I believe the high school has at least one, if not one and a half coordinators. So while it's something that can be looked into, I don't know if there's space, school districts around that would want to enter into that kind of an agreement. But I can certainly talk to Ms. Neville, who's the director of Taswell-Mason Special Education Cooperative, and see if she's heard anything like that for the next school year.
She said if you go too far out, then.
Then they're driving all day.
They're driving all day.
Well, the problem is, is what they did, I think it's, you know, it's like Monday, Wednesday, they have them or something, Thursday party, Saturday, Sunday, it was a Thursday party, you know.
So the dates was off.
So the dates was off, it wasn't.
Well, but Marquette Heights hired their own.
Well, yeah, and they changed their.
They might be willing to revisit it too, but since it was issued, they just hired.
The budget may be hurting as well.
Yeah.
I can call Mr. Sonagraf and see what's going on over there. Yeah, anything that would be done would be for the following school year, of course.
All right, we need a motion, please. Oh, I'm sorry, was there any further public participation? Hearing none, let's have a motion, please, for executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn to close session for appointment, appointment, performance, termination of personnel, and collective negotiation matters between the public body and the School and Service Personnel Association.
That's six. Uh, let's take a vote first. I'm sorry, your second. A vote, roll call, please.
Linda Bailey.
Aye.
Pam Criner.
Aye.
Brenda Cagle.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Julie Truitt.
Aye.
Rebecca Kern.
Aye.
Judy Strong.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I need a motion for a regular session, please.
Make the motion to resume.
Roll call, please.
Linda Bailey.
Aye.
Pam Criner.
Aye.
Brenda Cagle.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Julie Truitt.
Aye.
Rebecca Kern.
Aye.
Judy Strong.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Session at eight twenty-five, we need a motion, please, for I1.
Make a motion to accept a retirement letter from Deborah Peacock, effective August 5th, 2014, with regrets.
Thank you, a second, please.
Hi, second.
Discussion. Having none, roll call, please.
Linda Bailey.
Aye.
Pam Criner.
Aye.
Brenda Cagle.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Julie Truitt.
Aye.
Rebecca Kern.
Aye.
Judy Strong.
Yes.
Motion carried.
A motion for I2, please.
Make a motion to employ, to employ Kaylee Skaggs as a teacher for the 2014-2015 school year.
I second it. And roll call, please.
Linda Bailey.
Aye.
Pam Criner.
Aye.
Brenda Cagle.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Julie Truitt.
Aye.
Rebecca Kern.
Aye.
Judy Strong.
Yes.
Motion carried.
We need a motion for employment for Steve Hubie, please.
I make a motion to employ Steve Hubie as a special education teacher for the 2014-2015 school year.
Hi, second.
Any comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Linda Bailey.
Aye.
Pam Criner.
No.
Brenda Cagle.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
No.
Julie Truitt.
Aye.
Rebecca Kern.
Aye.
Judy Strong.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We need a motion to employ Michelle and Marie Allison.
I make a motion to employ Michelle and Marie Allison as a special education teacher for the 2014-2015 school year.
Hi, second.
Thank you. Communications. Roll call.
Linda Bailey.
Aye.
Pam Criner.
Aye.
Brenda Cagle.
Aye.
Val Reagan.
Aye.
Julie Truitt.
Aye.
Rebecca Kern.
Aye.
Judy Strong.
Yes.
Motion carried.
We need one more motion, please.
We need a motion to employ Sarah Gilmore as a teacher for the 2014-2015 school year.
Any comments? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Linda Bailey.
Aye.
Pam Criner.
Aye.
Brenda Cagle.
Aye.
Val Reagan. Julie Truitt.
Aye.
Rebecca Kern.
Aye.
Judy Strong.
Yes.
Motion carried.
We need a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-eight, please.
Make a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-eight.
Hi, second.
Roll call.
Linda Bailey.
Aye.
Pam Criner.
Yep.
Brenda Cagle.
Yes.
Val Reagan. So then the. Julie Truitt.
Aye.
Rebecca Kern.
Aye.
Judy Strong.
Yes.
Motion carried.